...meeting is going to be a rather informal meeting, but we would like to keep things in order so that we kind of know what's going on. First, I'm going to call on Daniel Oakley to present a little information to us based on what we have in the bank, what our system is for the one quarter of the one cent, and some information given on that. And after that, I will call on each counselor by district in order, from districts one through seven. They'll be allowed to make comments, make suggestions, ask questions, and following their comments, any other counselors may address the comments or questions or suggestions that that particular counselor made, and then we will have closing comments by each counselor. So, Mr. Oakley, if you would come forward, we are ready for your presentation.
Yes, ma'am. I guess I'll start just to get a brief kind of process on how we go about collecting the taxes and getting them into the bank account. Just as an example, we have February transactions, February sales. The sales taxes from those sales in February are collected and remitted to the city in March, and they're due the March 20th. At the end of March, first few days in April, we'll run the reports that kind of tell us how much, how many taxes, how much money was collected. And then during the month of April, we'll calculate the one cent portion, and it gets divided into five different buckets. Ten percent to the general fund reserves, the remaining ninety percent gets split four ways, one which is education money. And then those checks are cut, deposited into their own individual bank accounts. So, the education one cent money has its own bank account. It's the only thing, long-term actions that come in and out of there. It will have one deposit a month and one interest, little bit of interest we earn on, I guess, deposits in each month, and whatever checks are expensive will come out of there. Just to give you some rough numbers, at the end of February, we had $2,385,000 in the bank. I don't know how to round these numbers for still. Two million, three hundred eighty-five thousand. So that's what's cash in the bank at the end of February. We're going to add another $154,000 during the month of March. Talk a little bit about the current earmarks, designations that we have for these funds, one of which is Central Alabama Community College. That is a five-year allocation of twenty-five percent of the education funds, and those are paid to CAC on a quarterly basis. This started in October of 2021, so it will end in October 2026. And we have paid so far cumulative $722,000 to CAC, and that goes towards their operations and maintenance of their facility and their campus here in Prowl. So that's one designation. That's kind of a long-term agreement, five-year deal. The other designation we have is school resource officers. And in fiscal year 2023, we budgeted to use approximately $275,000 of education funds to pay for four school resource officers. The balance has not been taken out of the education cash account yet. Salaries for all the general fund departments are paid, including the police department, are paid out of the general fund operating account, reimbursed in general fund operating account, and so forth for the education money. So in terms of cash on hand, you need to take that two seventy-five out of there for the year if you want to true number. We also provide additional officers to the schools in the form of our community relations That division of the police department has three officers, so we really have a total of seven that will provide the schools, but only four of them are considered school resource officers and are paid with the education money. The three community relations officers are paid with just normal general fund money. Past twelve months, if you want kind of an idea of roughly what we've actually collected, past twelve months have yielded pretty much $2 million in education funds, 1.998. Approximately $500,000 of this went to CAC, leaving the city with roughly 1.5 million in unallocated funds over the past twelve months. And the, when we started this, I think it was July of 21, so we were accumulating money prior to the past twelve-month period. That's how we get to the 2.4 million we have in the bank now. Interest on these accounts are pretty nominal. We get currently about thirty to sixty basis points, thanks last month with sixty basis points, so it's about eight hundred bucks a month of interest. So that's nominal, but it does stay in that account and can be used for educational purposes. That's kind of a brief overview, some numbers, what we have, what we accumulated, what we've got earmarked, but happy to answer any other questions.
Do any counselors have any questions for Mr. Oakley at this time? Yes, or Mr. Chambers?
Mr. Oakley, just to make sure, please, after the CAC and the last twelve months, we're looking at about 1.5 million left unallocated. So is that say that you're not accounting for the resource officers at 275?
Yeah, so if you want to know exactly how much money we have right now in the bank, to spend that hasn't been allocated, I will take the 2.385 million, okay, that's how much cash in the bank, add 154,000 to that, because we'll deposit that during this month here in Prowl, and then take out half of 275,000, because we've gone through half a year. Two seventy-five represents the full this week.
Do any other counselors have questions for Mr. Oakley at this time? All right, Mr. Oakley, I want to keep you on call, please, because I'm sure you will come up again at some point during the meeting. But thank you so much for that. That's very helpful for us to have a starting point, and especially for the public also to understand how we're doing this, what we're looking at, what we have available, and how we get it, and how quickly it refurbishes, or how slowly it refurbishes. So these answered some really good general questions, just for general knowledge about where we are, what is our starting point right now in looking at education, and what are our earmarks that are holding us back and keeping us from spending certain parts of the money as well. Okay, so at this point, we'll move to Counselor Strickland for any comments or questions or ideas. Counselor Strickland, you have the floor.
Thank you. As a graduate of Otto County High School, it was heartbreaking for me to hear from our locally elected educators a tri-governmental meeting held Monday evening, February 13th this year. As a non-educator listening, it appeared to me that both federal and state unfunded mandates are imposing rules, regulations, and responsibilities on our teachers and administration that parents and their guardians were doing fifty years ago. The facts support that local financial support for education funding is below the school systems we are frequently compared to. Unfunded mandates dramatically reduce local discretionary funds available to the Board of Education. To me, it appears that the evils of the world are caught up with our Otto County school system, whether they've probably been there for a number of years, or they are now being more quickly brought to the public's attention via active social media platforms. In retrospect, evidence of these unsolved problems, longevity possibilities, a reflection of the trend of teachers and administrators leaving the system in greater numbers during the last decade. The problems and situations we heard about that Monday evening are systemic to our school system. They may be grade and/or age-related, but they are not isolated in one school. Focusing treatment and resources on one grade or one school, in my opinion, will not resolve the situation. Whether your area of concern is teacher safety, mental health, drugs, guns, or gangs, these issues are not isolated to the city limits, nor are they isolated in the PJ, nor exclusively in the county. They are systemically, system-wide. Personally, I feel it's important that input recommendations and guidance from those elected to address the situation should be sought and considered before we issue demands and decrees as to how our potential financial contribution will be spent. I am in favor of assisting the Otto County Board of Education with funds allocated for education based on a percentage of the sales tax revenue that we have received. I'm also in favor of continuing to support Central Alabama Community College. I support providing educational funds for initial and ongoing funding for a facility to house and display the extensive artifacts of our town's founder, Daniel Pratt. And I support our public library system. Because this revenue stream is from a sales tax, which varies each month, and a fixed amount is not guaranteed, I support percentage allocations versus the flat dollar amount. The last student population information I had showed forty-nine percent of the students were within Prattville city limits, twenty-one percent of the students were in the police jurisdiction, and thirty percent were in the county. If allocations are considered by school, student population would be an equitable approach. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Strickland. Do any other counselors care to comment or question Counselor Strickland at this time? Okay, thank you. Counselor Jackson, the floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone. A tri-governmental meeting, I had an opportunity to voice some of my concerns as far as how we should spend some of these education funds. And being an educator here, you know, I stress that we're for some safety and protecting our students and protecting our teachers as well, and I'm definitely not deviating from that because that's so important. But I definitely want to stress about how important it is for us as a government body to invest in our school system, because that is important. That was separated for so many years. That's what separated Otto County from all the other school systems, all the other counties here in the region, was our education. And I just think it's so important that we, as a city, invest as much as possible to partner with the current administration and help them to help get the system back where it was and where it needs to be as far as one of the top systems educationally in the state of Alabama. So I think it's imperative. And also, looking at economic development, we just spent, we just hired an economic developer, and we've given him a pretty good salary. And I think in order to help him get to do his job and to make the city better as a whole, we have to invest in our education. And I think, you know, if we overlook and not take this process seriously, then it's not going to help our economic development, and it's not going to help the city continue to grow like it should. Also, I'll continue to stress that it's important that we take the politics out of it. Otto Education Foundation gave us some information, Central Alabama Community Foundation also stated that they will be able to help us, and I think it is, I think it would be advantageous for us to reach out to them and have them come in and help us manage these funds. Again, it takes the politics out, because at the end of the day, we're going to do what's best for citizens using the citizens' money. Because at the end of the day, this is the taxpayers' money. This is not our money. None of us, this is not ours, this is the taxpayers', and I think that's what's important, that we have their input, but we also show that we're transparent, and we need to be transparent, but also let them have input as to how this funding needs to be spent. But again, we want to make sure Otto Education, Otto County's education is top of the state because, again, that's what we've always been, and that's what we want to get back to.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Do any counselors have questions or comments on those things made by Counselor Jackson? Okay, Counselor Chambers, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm a former student and graduate of Prattville High School, and I raised my two daughters that also went through the school system. My mother was a school teacher and a school counselor for many years, retired about ten years ago, but in about thirty-plus years. I'm very familiar and I'm very close as far as the public school system here in Otto County, and I do see that we are falling behind. I think this is nothing new, I've said this before, but obviously we do need to do something and help our students and teachers for the city and the county as much as we can. I know a lot of people, including myself, was disappointed in how the abhorrent tax was not voted through, and I hope that the county Board of Education, the commission, and the state reps will get back to the drawing table and come up with another plan that maybe hopes that we can get that passed in the future. I think that's very important. I mean, the city, we can only do so much, but I think if we can get that abhorrent tax passed, I think that will go a long way. And I'm obviously in favor of continuing to help funding with the CAC and public library and public schools that we can't help any way we can, and continue, you know, do the things that we already have. And this, you know, here we have some different things, I guess indirectly, Daniel, that we have through our fires, you know, department and whatnot, also that helps out, you know, direct the funding. But, you know, during the tri-governmental meeting, I know everybody of government expressed an interest and desire to improve our schools and our school system. I really hope that everybody was genuine about that. I know I am. I welcome everybody to come to the table, you know, in some form or fashion, and let's find out how we can make this work for our kids, our teachers. I do have concerns about Maxwell Air Force Base. I do have several friends that are in Air War College or whatnot, and they do share those tidbits with me in regards to, you know, going elsewhere outside of Prattville now. I think we need to make sure that stops, and as Counselor Jackson mentioned, economic development is going to be impacted, and I think in some ways it may have already been. So I welcome any conversations, and anybody's welcome to reach out to me. And I just encourage everybody, those that are able to, and those bodies of government and Board of Education, to come together, let's have some meetings, and let's figure out how we can make this work. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Chambers. Do any counselors have questions or comments for Counselor Chambers based on his recent Okay, Counselor Marto, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I too am a graduate of Otto County School System. We have definitely, and I think it's been reiterated enough times, we're definitely falling behind. You know, when I was in school, Prattville was one of the top athletic programs in the state, one of the top academic school systems in the state, and it's, we are slipping. We're falling behind even in some of our close tri-county area fellow school systems. So there are definitely improvements that need to be made. I'm not going to sit here and pretend that I'm an expert in all things education. I do agree with Marcus that we probably need to reach out to some outside sources and folks that have expertise in improving school systems specifically before we go spending taxpayer money on O M. I also agree with John, who knows, is disappointed with the abhorrent tax didn't go through because that would have been a significant help. However, I do also hope that state legislators can readdress this and bring this back for us and hopefully get something going on that end as well. You know, like everybody else has said, you know, we, I think everybody up here would welcome any input from anybody with concerns about the education system. You know, we want as much input from the community as we can so that we can make the best, most informed decisions on improvements to make for the education system because, you know, education is key, economic development is going to be key, and in order for us to climb our way back up in the ranks at the state, this is going to need to be a group effort. So I also welcome any conversations from anybody, any insights or ideas in how to improve our school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Marto. Do any counselors have any questions at this time or comments based on Counselor Marto's comments? Okay, Counselor Stritchick.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, like everyone on this panel, we're graduates of Prattville High School, even Otto County High School, I guess we're all liars, maybe the easiest way to say it, and including Counselor-elect Tom Merritt, he's also a Prattville high. So, yeah, I'm concerned around crimson, coral and white, excuse me, and so we're all concerned. It's a tricky situation with this money, obviously. There's, like I said before, there's fifty people in this room, and there are probably fifty different opinions, and that's, that's fine. The six or seven of us are tasked with helping make those decisions, these hard decisions. We're not policing everybody. We do that two Tuesdays a month as it is, we make decisions that upset others, and others are happy. This is part of politics, a part of, you know, what we do as servants to our city. Which leads me back to, we are city servants, we are the city council. I never have wanted to run for Board of Education because that's out of my realm. Never had any desire to be a county commissioner. This is what I wanted to do, get back to my city, my district, and keep with, again, my city. My thoughts on the money should stay within the side of the PJ. Our school system in the PJ, we provide fire services, police services, sanitation services for people who live in Prowl because they make that decision to live in Prowl. Folks who live out in the county, that is for some of the choice, for some they're inherited, landed, and all kinds of reasons why people don't live in the city. There's nothing wrong with that. That's the great thing as a county commissioner, but we're the citizens of our city, in my opinion. There's a lot of money involved here. Counselor Strickland, I agree with you, a percentage of our money for our libraries and for our artifacts, because to me that is education. Ms. Babbel's here tonight, I mean, she's putting in a lot of effort, along with a lot of others, to educate not only our citizens, but people from out of state, the country, and the world about Daniel Pratt and significance of economic development, which began here in Prowl. And so people need to learn more about that. Our library, you know, I probably haven't walked in the library in thirty years, but I know there aren't just books to check out anymore, there's a lot more technology involved, there's a lot more things going on inside the library, so I'm going to look at the percentage definitely as well going to our library. But the majority of the funds, in my opinion, goes toward the PJ schools because we are against city counselors. And I don't want to see, I wouldn't like to see sub-laning up the money. Basically, in a nutshell, sub-laning, if there's $10,000 on a project for all four of our schools, high schools in the county, it doesn't mean everybody gets 2,500, it doesn't mean everybody gets 2,500 of that 10,000, it doesn't mean everyone splits the 2,500, with the exception of Prattville High School because they get more funds from this tax. It isn't legal to sub-lan that money, and I don't like to see any of that, any of those funds go waste in that, you know, in that way. There are necessary needs for our school system. I thought of this tri-governmental meeting, Counselor Jackson brought some great ideas as far as security and safety, which is desperately needed. My opinion, on whatever percentage goes toward our, in PJ school system, to me, they should be able to allow to do whatever they want with it as far as education. The Board of Education knows their needs a lot more than we do, so the Board of Education is elected to know what the needs are of the school system. Now, we don't expect the Board of Education to come tell us what color our lease cards should be. So if we give them their money, allow them to use it as adults and spend it any way they'd like to, I would ask that we get a quarterly or a bi-quarterly report to our economic, excuse me, our finance department to see how the money has been spent. I think, you know, checks and balances have to be made. This is what we spend, that's something we can address, but I think Board of Education should spend that money how they feel necessary to spend, that we should not dictate their percentage, because, again, that's their job. Also, I have something else written down. Continuing services, as far as, you know, what we're doing now, it was mentioned earlier by Mr. Oakley, as far as crossing guards and in-school security, you know, just keep those, you know, no change there. It's a, it's a good thing that we're able to do that. So that's how I feel about it. The CAC money needs to keep going, I mean, $500,000. I know that this panel of Children'sburg spends a lot more money on their CAC campus than $500,000 to keep CAC in Children'sburg, so it's really not as much as what we'd be spending. And for the social media people out there who love to spread rumors or put things on there all the time without any factual basis, I speak to most of these people up here on a regular basis, all six of them, Clay and Tommy, and I've never had one conversation with anybody sitting up here saying, "How much money are we going to spend on Ivy Charter School?" No, we're, don't know any, never even heard of it. So the fact that people go around saying, "Well, they don't give that money to Charter School," well, that's news to me, and I'm pretty sure it's news to everybody up here. So just want to touch on that just for a second. That's my thoughts on it, and I respect everyone else's opinion here as well, and hopefully we can all move forward and get this done and help our children and our educators. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Stritchick. Do any counselors have any comments or questions for Counselor Stritchick? Hey, I guess that leaves me. Before I get into my comments, I'd like to ask Daniel Oakley one more question that came up to my mind as we were doing this. Daniel, how long since we established this account for the one quarter of the one cent sales tax for education? How long has that money been, the account been existing?
I think it was, it was right after we passed the ordinance that kind of re-upped the one cent and reallocated it. I'm pretty sure it was July 21.
Twenty-one, so almost two years, moving towards two years. This summer.
I think July was the first month that we collected, and then we would have remitted. July sales, collect in August, deposit September.
So this summer, only two years.
Yes.
Thank you, that answered my question. Okay, my comments on the situation. First of all, I would like to see us replace rhetoric with action, because as Mr. Oakley just said, two years, we are moving towards two years. Here we are in March, our second meeting in March is coming up next week. We are moving very quickly towards the summer, towards a two-year mark where the money has been building, the money has been sitting, and the only money that is being spent is for CAC's allocation and for our school resource officers. So the money has been building, there has been plenty of time for discussion, there have been committees that have discussed this, there have been individual discussions, and here we are, and we can talk until we're blue in the face, but the money is just growing at the bank, and it's time to do something about it. I'm ready to see us act. I did not come to make a meeting to have a meeting. I came to have a meeting to get something done, and that's the reason I'm here, and I believe that most of the other counselors got elected for the same thing, because they are decision-makers, and that's what we're here to do. So if we're going to do some action, let's talk about some ideas with that. I do agree with Counselor Strickland in that we may have a systemic problem, that this is going on in schools all over the county, all over the country, all over the state. However, if we make a metaphor, or we look at this like a medical problem, when you come into the hospital with a systemic problem, the first thing they do is triage you, and when you go into triage, they start with the bleeding, because if they don't stop the bleeding, you're going to die before they can ever get to the systemic problem. And if we don't stop the bleeding, our school system and our economic system is going to die before we can get to the systemic problems. Yes, let's get to the systemic problems, let's address all of those, but right now we have the means to start with the Band-Aid, to start with the bleeding, to get the basics stopped, and move beyond that, and then give the BOE time, they're a very new committee, to give them some time. to give them some time to address their own issues. But we can help at this point by stopping the bleeding. So while I agree that there may be systemic problems, there are specific areas we can triage and treat instead of spending more time discussing what is the diagnosis. That's not where we need to start. All right, after that, I would like to address the idea that has come up a couple of times from the DIAS about outside sources being the funding divider, us hiring someone else to take a look at our money, make decisions about how our money is spent, write the checks, keep the books. We have a finance department. Surprise, we already have that. Why in the world would we pay money that comes from the taxpayers that could go to help the BOE and other sources on an outside marketing accounting firm? No, that just doesn't make any sense. Take the money we have that goes towards education for education, not for an outside source. Mr. Oakley and his assistants and his department are fully ready to handle. We're not talking about putting extra work on them by making so much minutia that it makes extra work, but the few checks that we need to be cutting, a little bit of bookkeeping that we need to do to spend the money in the accounts the same way that in our other one cent accounts we will be spending money. They're the ones handling it. We're not hiring an outside source to decide what kind of piping we're putting in on a street when infrastructure needs money for piping. We don't go hire somebody else to write the checks and keep the books. That is what our finance department is for. So I would say a no to an outside source. I think that that is, when they say take the politics out, our finance department is transparent as they come. Their records are open and public. We don't need an outside source just to take politics out. We are up here because we're part of politics. If you don't like our politics, we can be voted out and the next group who comes in can start over with this. So I'm willing to put that on the line and say, we're up here to make decisions, hard decisions, as Councilor Stritchick said. This is a hard decision, but I'm ready to put myself out there and I believe these other guys are as well. So that is the issue I would like to see handled as far as hiring an outside source. I do support Councilor Striplin's idea, and several others have mentioned as well, CAC needs to stay on our books. They are a great economic influencer, they bring people in, and it will continue to grow and be a benefit to our community all the way around. I also am in favor of historical preservation, whether it be through museums, through taking care of our artifacts, through our gin shop history. Yes, that's a great source that we need to be funding in some way or another. So we will definitely not want to come in and take every bit of our money and pour it just into the BOE. The BOE is a big source of where I would like to see it go. But yes, and the library, as to Councilor Stritchick's comments, I actually owe $3.25 to the library because I'm in there every week. He may not go for 30 years, but I'm in there every week. And it's a wonderful resource for the people of our county, and I do want to see us continue to fund these other ideas. So we are looking at a big bucket, there's enough money in there to fund many things. But right now, we are here to talk about a bleeding, an emergent action, what can we do specifically? Not to take all of our money out at once and empty our account, but in what way are we going to address what is going on with our BOE and whether or not we have ideas for immediate action and a resolution. I also support Councilor Stritchick's idea of, once we decide an allocation to the BOE, allowing them to handle its usage. I do believe that they should definitely owe us some type of record keeping. We should see a report regularly on how they're spending that. We should have some proof so we can turn around and tell the taxpayers, "Your money was well spent," and we can tell you how, and we can show you how. And they will have the same responsibility of showing the taxpayers how they spent the money and what the results of that spending was. Therefore, both groups, they are also an elected group, so they have the same accountability to the public that we have. And if they don't spend it well, and if they don't get results, the exact same thing is going to happen to them. They are on the line, they're taking a risk, and I believe, like Councilor Stritchick said, that is their issue. They are more ingrained in what is going on and what the immediate needs are than we are. If we take it back to our medical image here, I would say as a metaphor that they are the specialists. We may be the internist, we may be the hospitalist, they are the specialists who has been called in. So once we get them to the right department, I believe that they can make choices well about how to spend that money as long as it's reported back to us. If we don't like the way they're spending it, guess what? Next time around, we can change how we do our allocation or if we even do one. So once again, there is a chain of command that's already established, and there are consequences, whether they be political, whether they be results-driven, but we can make a change anytime as to how that works. So this is my idea. I would like to see us, going back to my point one, move from rhetoric to action. And so I would like to call the council to come up very quickly with a resolution as to how we're going to begin spending the money and how we're going to aid in this immediate issue within our county. Those are my comments, and I'm going to open it up now for closing comments from each counselor. Councilor Striplin?
I think a lot of positive information has been shared this evening. I concur, I like the idea of allowing the experts, the Board of Education, to make the decision. And in support of the other areas that are deemed education that are not Board of Education, I would just toss out for our discussion at some, at some point, a percentage of 50% of the funding that we have available to us, 25% goes to CAC. That leaves 25% for at least two other opportunities. And so that is just for discussion purposes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Striplin. Councilor Jackson?
Are these closed remarks? Are we done?
I'm here as long as y'all are, so if you have more to say, I am certainly willing to listen, and I'm very open, I welcome the progress. So if, if we get further with progress, if you have more to say, go for it.
And I'm just trying to figure out if this is closing or if there are more questions to be asked?
It was my idea to have closing, but I think that Councilor Striplin has made an excellent point. And if people want to get on board with that and tweak that, address that, support that, then if we want to do something like that and then have closing, however we want to do it. So I will allow you to have the microphone again if you would like to put it that way.
All right, I'll go, no comments.
No comments for now. Counselor Chambers?
Yes, ma'am. So far, I believe this has been positive. At the same time, I do believe in the sentiment of having more of a sense of urgency regarding this. Like you mentioned, it's been close to two years. Instead of, you know, lip service, we need to actually be doing something about it and having that sense of urgency. And again, I love meeting one to reach out to me personally if you have any great ideas, and the council members as well. I think we need to be making something happen pretty quick. I'm definitely interested in your ideas, Councilor Striplin, on that 50% deal. And maybe board members, anybody, I'm not sure how you've got the meeting set up, if they have any feedback that they'd like to present to us, but I'd be interested in hearing that as well.
I actually did not have that planned into our meeting, but we certainly welcome their calls, their emails. You know, obviously, it's another week until this current meeting. If we put anything on this agenda, it's another two weeks after that till our next one. So we certainly have time to hear from them and resolve anything that we decide to put into writing and vote on before them. So at that point, I think we could definitely want to hear from them, but I think they're probably going to have more to say than we have time for to allow an open mic night without preparation.
Okay, thank you. Guys, anybody out there, feel free to reach out to me. Definitely welcome the call. Thank you.
Councilor Gortot?
Yes, ma'am. I just want to clarify, I did not mean to suggest that we go and look for an outside source to handle the finances. I was merely trying to say that I do not feel qualified to sit here and make decisions on how this money should be spent. I do agree with, with Councilor Stritchick and President Boone that, you know, that that needs to be left up to Board of Education. They were voted in for a reason. They do have a finger on the pulse of the school system more so than we probably do. So I agree, you know, we do need to, to move with some haste towards a decision on a percentage of allocation for this funding and then let the Board of Education do their job and spend the money how they see fit. I do agree that we ought to get some sort of reports, thank you, reports on how that money is being spent so that we can be as transparent as possible because this is citizens' taxpayer money. But yeah, I just wanted to clarify that I was not suggesting we find an outside source to handle the funds. You're right, Mr. Oakley is more than capable, I think, of handling that. But yeah, I just, I think the decisions on how the money should be spent should definitely be left to the Board. Have a little over there.
Thank you, Councilor Gortot. Councilor Stritchick?
Yes, ma'am.
Wow. Yes, sir, Mr. Chambers?
Thank you. I think at some point, there needs to, I know everybody may have a little bit different opinion on this, when you say spend it however, but does that also mean wherever? You know, are we talking PJ, we're talking across the county? But I think that's going to be a very popular subject when it comes down to this, so just something to be thinking about.
Yes, sir, Mr. Jackson?
And I was just going through some emails right now, and I know from, I don't know, when we were initially going through some of this, Albert would send Robert and I some emails, and I know he had a meeting with Daniel and Carl, and he mentioned that he mentioned some fees that Central Community Foundation, they gave some numbers and that. And according to Albert's email here, that you guys are pretty comfortable with, you know, with what they said that they could do the management of the money for, according, yeah. And I'm asking because too, I know Daniel, I think you guys serve on the economic development team. You guys have quite a bit on your, on your plates. And also, I know one time we were just talking about tracking money from one particular department, and you just said that it would require you to, you know, possibly have some more help. So I'm just thinking, you know, would this add more to you?
Well, to answer the question, and I remember the conversation, it really depends on how, what we're looking to do. The presentation by Councilor Striplin was basically sending, sending money to several resources, but a big pot of money to CICF, and they were going to solicit and accept individual grant applications from individual teachers, individual schools. That's not something I was interested in doing. That's something we don't have the capacity to do. It's that, my new level of detail and the fees charged for that sort of thing, I thought the reason why it's 15 grand or something. I can't exactly remember, but this higher level, we're talking about splitting things into percentages, and then, yeah, we can easily handle that. It's the individual grant applications to a teacher, to a school for individual projects each year, that was something we couldn't.
That makes sense. All right.
Anything else, or next?
No.
Okay, yes, sir, Councilor Gortot?
I do have one more comment regarding, you know, the percentage of funds that's spent within the PJ, whether all of the money that we allocate to the school system, all we spend on PJ. I guess, I guess I have a difficult time believing that if we say, okay, we're going to give 50% of the one cent education fund, we're going to give that to schools within the PJ, I think at the end of the day, it's going to end up getting dispersed across the entire county anyways. Because if we say, okay, we're going to give, you know, 1.5 million to just the PJ schools, how, what's to stop Board of Education from taking the funding that was already going to the cities, the PJ schools, and just sliding it over to the rest of the schools out in the county? So I think if we start talking about why don't we totally fund the schools in the PJ, I think it's all going to get evenly distributed at the end of the day anyways.
I'd like to respond to that. One thing that's going to prevent that from happening or possibly happening is some legal law. Mr. Tidmore is here, he understands rules and subplanting is where, you know, former APD member, Mr. Madison's here. So, yeah, it's illegal to do that, and hopefully our people are appreciating to use their watch and how the money is allocated. So hopefully that answers the question.
Thank you, Councilor Stritchick. Do any other councilors have any comments? Yes, sir, Mr. Jackson?
I was going to ask since Mr. Tidmore is here, if there's anything, what, what, what would be best for us to do as far as distributing money to you guys? What would be most effective, is it possible for you to?
Councilor Jackson, we're not going into that this evening. We, I would welcome comments and questions from Mr. Tidmore, but if we go into an open mic forum from, from several other people from outside of our board, then I think that we could really, we could get into more than we need to tonight. I certainly welcome that information from him and would love to hear it, but I would like it if he would respond to you specifically or to all of us with that information.
What, can I make a motion that we only open the mic to him and no one else? I'm just kidding. But no, I'm trying to expedite this situation since we're talking about time, this, this, this matter to get them the money that they need, you know, what we need, what do we need to do tonight to try to have that process, what else?
If Mr. Tidmore is ready to speak, then we will certainly welcome him to the mic.
I wasn't ready to speak, but, you know, you always have to be ready whenever. We, as the board, know what our needs are. We have a process of tracking money very well through our accounting system and all. We would like, it's important for us to determine what we need, not input from somebody who doesn't necessarily know. Are they here from social media, you know, whatever? So our immediate need, you know, excuse me, is to let us determine what we need. And that's, I think that's the, you know, that's the consensus that we've worked over. You know, we had a great deal in the East with the Adlorn that didn't pan out. So we just need to be allowed to do what we know is right.
Certainly. Counselor Chambers?
Mr. Tidmore, are there any, is there any movement in potentially trying to go back to the table?
There is.
Okay. Is that something, we might see something in the near future?
Very.
I'd love to see what it's all about.
Do any other councilors have questions for Mr. Superintendent? Thank you, we're sorry we put you on the spot, but we do appreciate your availability and, and your comments this evening.
Lean down, lean down.
Mr. Oakley, did you have something else you want to address?
Well, just briefly. So, just flooding the water. As you're thinking about kind of what you, what direction you want to go, just wanted to throw a couple of things out there to kind of work into that, that thought process too. Obviously, going forward, you know, we're looking at potential percentages and things of that nature. But we also need to kind of figure out what we're going to do with the current allocation that we have. So we've got the pot of money, and if we just want to distribute it in that same manner, we need to make sure we think about that too. Or something bigger, that's more a one-time deal, to just kind of think about that. We've got two ways to fund the entities, whether it's the Board of Ed or the library or Heritage Association. So we can do it on a year-by-year basis, which is just kind of putting it into the budget each year. CAC, you know, we had an agreement, a five-year agreement. So, you know, it's kind of, you don't need to decide what you want to think really year by year. These council members change, you know, from time to time. Or something a little bit longer term, where it's, you know, a four-year deal, or about, you know, what happened, you know. Just something to think about. Also, if we're going to rope in a high school and a tech center, we need to change the ordinance. The current ordinance language, I'll paraphrase, basically, it has to go towards education within the city limits of Prowl. So if we're going to rope in the, the big high school and the technology center, we need to make sure we change that to rope in. I don't know if there are any other schools in the PJ other than us two, but those two are, if you're going to rope in. So that would be an ordinance change. The other budget amendments and things like that can be just resolutions. So, anyway, that's what I have.
What's your suggestion as far as terming?
It's going to, I like it year by year for It's going to, I like a year-by-year for some things, but, you know, if, say, the Heritage Association builds a museum, and they need money for operations, that's something that is similar to CAC to me. The Board of Education, you may want to look at, you know, we're going to get reported. You know, you may want to look at something on a shorter frame, just to make sure it's going like you want it to. But, you know, from their perspective as well, they're going to have budgeting needs, and they're going to need to know whether it's going to be, we have a few board members, whether it's going to be available two, three years from now. So I don't know. I'm on the fence on that one.
Shorter frame? You say "shorter frame," what do you mean by "shorter"? Three years, 10 years?
Uh, certainly, I wouldn't, probably want to extend it past your stay in the quadrant, unless you want to extend it a year of business political speaking, a year beyond that. You know, since you may have a new body of folks or everybody in the back. We've kind of thought about that with CAC. I think it's long enough to be five years to get it out of that realm.
Where does our current library funding come from? Is that general budget?
Yes, that's general fund money. Just general revenue, still gets 320,000. We brought it up this year. I think it was 310 last year. You know, kind of, if we're going to give a percentage to them, is it for something different than what we're currently giving? Or is it going to free up some money for the general fund? And we're not going to give them money out of that pot? Any more, or is it a combination of?
I believe we've come to questions that we were not even planning to address tonight, because of course, you know, you opened Pandora's box, and we have more issues than just our immediate education fund. But what does that encompass? So another thing that we're going to need to look at when we make a resolution, if we are doing something pretty quickly, we make a resolution, are we simply addressing this pot of money? Are we addressing this immediate need with the BOE? Are we going to go ahead and address totality, 100% of the money in this, and what our percentage allocation to each is going to be? So we have definitely opened up that pan as to, and that may slow us down just a little bit if we decide to go ahead and do that, or if we're just at this point going to address our BOE. So if other counselors have comments on that, we certainly can address that as well. Thank you, Ms. Striplin.
One last question.
Your mind?
One last question. Do you think that, I know that county commissions that they use a quarter of their single sales use tax. Do we maybe need to look into possibly using some of that? Because I know moving forward, that's probably going to be...
Yeah, that tax is not one that I like, just in general, because it's less than what, I don't like the principal tax. I think it should be what we actually tax in this city, rather than just a flat 8%. But it was done at state levels, so it is what it is. That is a growing tax. I think the thing we need to be really careful about with that tax, we have worked it the first year for, I think we put it into Fairview, Avon?
Avon.
Okay. Avon. So, I have infrastructure. Ever since then, just going into the general fund helping, general fund expenses. The problem I have with trying to siphon off a piece of that tax is that tax is collected in lieu of a brick-and-mortar tax. So when people buy something on Amazon or Best Buy.com, they're not going to Kohl's or Target to buy it. And we're getting paid a less percentage than what we would have been at the 3.5% we would be getting. So it's a little bit wrong with Peter Payton. And I don't, I would be real hesitant to try and use that for anything other than general fund expenses, because general fund expenses are continuing to go up too. We're going to get, we're going back to start the budget kind of request process. I know, you know, there's going to be several requests for new positions, things like that, because the city is growing. And we've got to keep everything kind of growing together, is what I try to balance. So I, me personally, would not be in favor of that portion of that tax going towards education, especially since we have a quarter of it to be announced right there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Striplin. All right. Any other counselors have questions, comments, things we would like to address this evening?
Mr. Striplin, I very much like your suggestion. I think that 50% towards that, bringing that 25% to be used other ways, with the 25% that we already have allocated an earmark towards CAC. I think that is very reasonable. I think that it, because of the amount,